Okay, let's call the work session to order, please. I guess I'm gonna turn it over to you, Stephanie.
Good afternoon, just with much excitement that I stand before you this afternoon. I've asked here today our top-ranked vendor for the P-25 Land Mobile Radio System solicitation that we released last November. We had over 3,000 firms notified of this opportunity. We held a pre-bed conference in December with over 26 attendees, and we received one and a half responses. Harris gave us the full response. Did a great job. They've been through many, many iterations with us and have worked with us through what is fiber, what is microwave, how we can be flexible with that, how we can be flexible with radio counts, radio types, et cetera. And I asked them here today to give you the grand overview of their propagation maps, what their system really is, and to be able to answer any questions that you may have. And if you're all right with what they've presented to you, Tom and I have worked out a contract with them that is within budget. So if you're comfortable today, we would seek approval for that. And then turn it over to them.
No pressure, right?
No, no pressure. I'm not kidding. So, my name is Wayne Duff with Harris Public Safety Communications. Good afternoon to the board, staff with the county, and everyone that's present. This is Kenny Silverman. He's our lead engineer. He led the team that has designed the system to this point. And just a couple of words. From the get-go, when we first reviewed the request for proposals, we were very excited. The vision that the county has in migrating and merging the broadband project with the Land Mobile Radio Public Safety Communications Project. And part of that response was kind of two or three steps. One step, which the county wanted to know, was, okay, of the sites that we know we're gonna have fiber dedicated, what kind of coverage can we get for the public safety system? And we analyzed that and provided that as part of our response. However, that wasn't sufficient to meet the needs of the county for first responders and service delivery from a percentage of coverage. So we went back and forth on the design, and Kenny, I'd like to say we, but Kenny and his team has come up with a six-site design that we'll discuss today that I believe is extremely beneficial to the county. This is a huge project. It's a major investment, and we're just honored to be here today. And we're very honored to hopefully have the opportunity to partner with you all for this great project. Now, I see right up there, I was wondering if I could see it on this screen, but I'm gonna...
Can you just go to the screen right here?
It may come up. That's fine, let's see. I can refer up there.
Hang on.
That's okay, that's okay. Just, you all have a packet in front of you with information, but if you do not know a lot about Harris Corporation... Thank you, ma'am. Harris Corporation's been in business over 80 years, and if you're familiar with General Electric or MACOM, we've always had a Public Safety Communications Division within Central Virginia, located in Lynchburg, Virginia. But in 2009, Harris Corporation acquired the Public Safety Communications Division, located and headquartered in Lynchburg, and our factories in Bedford County. All of our equipment is manufactured in Rochester, New York at our facility, and then sent, whether it's coming to Orange County or going overseas, it goes to Bedford, Virginia, to the factory where it's integrated. But Harris, we've got, our global headquarters is obviously in Melbourne, Florida, but what's most important is that we have about 1,200 employees working in Central Virginia that are part of our Public Safety and Professional Communications Division. Harris Corporation is actually divided into four divisions. Our communications system, which does military, DoD, and public safety, and then space and intelligence, where we deploy satellites. Our electronic systems and critical networks, we actually control all of the traffic for the FAA, and we've deployed the, most recently, which I think is really neat, deployed all of the broadband and internet access for cruise ships. And then we do have the technology that is used in the Navy for, it's called HYDRA, for our warfighters and then aircraft carriers. So we, Harris has a broad plethora of interest in technology related to communications, related to broadband and LTE, and then this progression to FirstNet, which is gonna inevitably be a public safety dedicated, whenever it comes, broadband initiative for public safety. What's really, really awesome about the system that you're considering from Harris is your system is LMR, Land Mobile Radio, RF ready today, and also LTE ready for tomorrow with no additional adders or cost. Our core, as we call it, is LTE ready. So you've actually purchased, or will be purchasing, if we're successful in earning your business, equipment that already is ready for LTE. Matter of fact, the radios you're getting today will work over Wi-Fi. They have the capability of inserting an LTE card, so if you were to lose LMR coverage but had access to Wi-Fi or LTE, you would still be able to communicate. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. The main thing I wanted to just point out is our Public Safety and Professional Communications Division is located in Lynchburg, Virginia, and our factory's in Bedford. We're less than two hours away. And we, all of our customers are extremely important to us, but the ones in our backyard are very, very important to us. We've got systems all over North America, but what I think that I'd like to share that I think is really, really exciting for our company and for the Commonwealth of Virginia is the systems that we have either deployed or in implementation in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And these systems are called Project 25, which means that whether it's a Harris radio, a Motorola radio, a Kenwood radio, EF Johnson radio, if it's Project 25 certified, it'll work on your system. So that gives you a couple of opportunities. As much as I want you to procure Harris radios, you have options there, but I think what's most important is, is anybody from any other jurisdiction that comes to assist mutual aid, regardless of their radio manufacturer, if it's Project 25 compliant. And there are three compliance labs in the United States. One is in Lynchburg at Harris. So Motorola sends us radios, we send them radios. They are compliant within the P-25 standards, and they'll work on your system. There's nothing proprietary about it. There's nothing that's gonna keep somebody from coming in from next door and not being able to communicate on your system. The other thing that we'll talk a little bit about that I think is extremely awesome is Albemarle, Culpeper, Spotsylvania, Falkir, Rappahannock are all systems that are being deployed today. And our proposal includes, our contract includes, and our vision with this partnership is at some point to connect those systems together so that public safety officials or anyone on the radio system can roam seamlessly from county to county. And having been in law enforcement a couple, few decades, and I'll use this example for the major, whether it be fire or police, but I use the police example because I didn't score high enough on the fire exam to get into fire service, I had to be a police officer. Well, with that being said, if...
How much did he pay you?
If, if, if one of the major's deputies is in a high-speed chase and leaves Orange County and leaves the footprint of the coverage and goes into Spotsylvania, they will roam seamlessly onto the Spotsylvania system without touching the knob and still be talking back to Orange County Dispatch, as if they, to the user it seems.
Now, that is something you're planning for the future?
So, we have included the, what's called the ISI gateways that are required to make that happen. They are already in place in your proposal and contract, as well as in the other neighboring counties. The only missing piece is the connectivity, whether it be fiber or microwave, just to get from one of their towers to one of your towers. Once we make that one connection, it's done.
Okay, so that's something we need to negotiate at that point, when we're ready to do it, negotiate with the other jurisdictions.
Well, just as far as MOU, yes. But I will tell you that everybody's excited about it, you know? And working with them, everybody wants to tie these together.
And my understanding is, at least in Spots' case, most of their towers have fiber already.
Absolutely.
So if they have fiber, if we have fiber to ours, that connection is a trivial step.
That's, all it is, is a little networking on the IP addresses, and we're in.
It's a software, rather than having to build infrastructure.
But, but other than that connectivity, there's no additional cost to Orange County. It's there. We included that because we believe that, that having that ability to roam and tie these systems together is really, really critical. And you get an additional coverage benefit from that. There's overlapping coverage, so the county's next to you will benefit, and you will benefit from their overlapping coverage. The capacity with these systems, some people say, well, if I go onto their system, I'm gonna be loading their system. All of your systems are what we call Phase Two, which is a term called TDMA, but what all that means is every channel you have, and this is a five-channel system, every channel you have, there are two talk paths or two conversations that can go on simultaneously per channel. So the capacity is excellent. Okay, that was probably too long of an introduction of our organization, and now the most important part, I'm just gonna turn it over to Kenny and let him talk about kind of our VIDA core and then get into the nuts and bolts of your system.
Thank you.
And I'll stick around because I'll interrupt you, too.
Now, it's gonna start going over my head, I'm afraid.
Well, as you mentioned before, our core or our switch that does all of the networking, we call it VIDA, V-I-D-A, which stands for Voice Interoperability, Data, and Access. It's an acronym. But what it means to you is, is that this platform, as he was saying, is agnostic to technology. So if LTE comes around, you're not gonna have to do a forklift, a change of equipment. It's ready. So whatever pieces you need to plug into at any point in the future, they can do that, and it's a software change, and there's no other hardware change. So I think that's really the biggest thing to take away from this. From a basic component standpoint, here's a diagram showing, we'll start in the upper-right-hand corner, that we've included the Symphony consoles at Dispatch going clockwise. We've got network management terminals. We also have the ISI, and we have a slide later, we'll get into that, where we're talking about the interoperability between the other networks. We've got fire station alerting included. There is these analog talk paths, which basically is for the VHF system that we have included. There's a three-site VHF system overlay here, and then we have the six-site system for P-25.
Real quick, Tim, Kenny, just if I may point out for the board and staff, if you look at the top, it says VIDA core and then GEO High Availability HA.
Oh, thank you.
You're getting two VIDA cores that will be geographically separated. So in the worst-case scenario, VIDA core number one shuts down, within 20 seconds, VIDA core number two is up and running online. Separated geographically, the absolute same equipment, but located at two separate locations.
So only one of them is needed to function?
Only one is needed to function, and the other one we consider a backup.
It's hot standby.
And what you will be able to see, if we are able to get you to come to Bedford for system or factory acceptance testing, we actually blow up one and then watch, let you watch it switch over, and within 20 seconds, everything is reregistered on the second core.
One quick question, going back to that previous slide, and it may or may not impact this. You have listed five fire station alerting locations. Stephanie, Kirk, question for you. They have listed five fire station alerting locations. We need five or six?
You're asking me?
Well, because of the station in town...
How is it?
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that we addressed that at some point.
Absolutely.
Okay, not a problem.
And as Wayne was talking about, the switching technology between your back, your primary...
Let me ask another question.
Sure.
You say fire station, does that cover your rescue station, if you've got a separate rescue station?
That's, that's what I...
I'm not sure I heard, maybe I didn't understand.
Right.
We have two, at Lake of the Woods, there's the volunteers', fire station, and then just across the park.
I'm just thinking, no one just, we're putting in the town.
Well, that's the one I just asked about.
Okay.
I didn't hear the answer, though.
That's something that can definitely work.
We'll need another one.
So we'll need six?
Six, maybe seven.
Right.
Or at least six.
At least six, yeah.
Tell us...
Are you sure the contract we add or delete is needed?
Okay.
From a transition standpoint, us versus basically where the industry is, we've made a lot of advancements in this core switchover, which is beneficial for the public safety needs. At the top of the timeline, it takes typically, most systems, 30 seconds to detect that there's a problem, takes a while to transition, and then you've gotta recollect all the data. And it takes a long time to do that. With our system, detection is a couple of seconds, transition even less, and the collection of data, because we have simultaneous databases running at the same time, all the information is there, so it doesn't have to re-collect and talk to all the radios to make sure that everybody's okay. So it's a very, very quick transition.
Have we picked locations for the two cores? Do we know where they're gonna be?
Right now, Larry's thinking that one will be TIAC, and one will be here until we get into the new building, and then we'll need TIAC in the new building, or if we could work out an arrangement in the MOU with Spotsy, they have that one station right on the line. That's where they have their backup stock. If we could maybe swap rack space and put one...
Is that the Delmont Station or...
It's the one that's like a mile from our line. It responds on Route 3 a lot.
We've got a new one.
Oh, okay. Well, if it's on Route 3, it's Station 7.
It's their newest one, I believe.
Right there across from that, chance of...
It has fiber and that actually holds their backup.
Okay.
But the ultimate is the TIAC and the new rescue, new public safety station.
For right now, yes, sir. I mean, Larry would prefer to have one outside the county, just in case, but...
Well, these are fairly portable. I mean, we can move them around without it. It's not a big deal.
There's nothing in the system that says it has to go here. We can put it in any place.
It's a big server, right?
It's a rack of equipment.
Right, yeah, it's a rack.
From an overview of what's included in your system, we've got the six sites, which are five channels each. We've got back hall, which is the microwave side. We've included all microwave aspects, which combines to the county fiber. We've got a map of showing you which is which, and we can talk about that in a minute. We've got the redundant cores. We've got our Beyond, which is our PTT over broadband or over cellular, so you can have an application on your phone.
PTT over broadband.
Yes. A push-to-talk, I'm sorry. Beyond, it's, Beyond is our application, which resides on a smartphone, on an iPad or something of that nature. And it is secure communication that is encrypted, which acts just like a radio. So it's talking right back to Dispatch. So if there is an issue with coverage for some reason, you go into a basement and there's not sufficient coverage, if, as long as it's LTE coverage, or as Wayne was talking about, if there's Wi-Fi in there, you can switch over to either of those to still communicate back to Dispatch.
The schools were considering, you know, teachers have iPads in their classroom, having that on there and saving radio costs, or in addition, you know, just to have that extra layer.
So they could be able to communicate from their rooms to Dispatch in case there's...
Yep.
Ooh, that's interesting. That's why... Can that be text or any form of communication, or does that be voice?
It can be text, but what's interesting about it is, and we've got a couple of slides, this Beyond technology is really incredible in that your portable radios that are for public safety, fire, the multiband XL-200 radio, comes with Beyond. And then this application, you could actually go, whether you have an iPhone or an Android phone, you could go to the App Store and download Beyond for free now, but that's an application that cannot work until we enter an ID and password that's protected on your system. You can also control who has what on that. For example, what we've done in schools, is school administrators or even school teachers can have Beyond on their laptop, on their iPad, on their phone, and the only access they would have would be to push an emergency button, which would alert 911 Dispatch that there's an emergency at the school, and they could then relay that information faster than dialing 911.
Or faster than texting or anything else, yeah.
Exactly, exactly. And you can limit who has what. The other neat thing about it is, you can have these phones, this technology, on any of your talk groups, that it'll go over the radio system. And not that the vice chair would need to do this, but if you were on vacation in Florida, you could listen to radio traffic on your smartphone from the beach and even talk.
And be divorced in Florida.
Right, and you can talk back if you needed to. The other neat thing about it is, is you also can set up Beyond talk groups that aren't going through the system, that can be used, like each school could have their own talk group, or they could push to talk, and only the school personnel could hear it. So there's a lot of application with this technology. It's included with your system. There's 350 licenses, I believe, included with the contract, so plenty to go around.
Besides the Beyond system, we've got AES encryption, so it's a high encryption. We've got over-the-air programming to radios and to the base stations. We've got GPS location systems for the radios, where they'll identify what their coordinates are, that'll go back into your CAT system, so you can know where your units are.
Is that real-time? It just, it updates and tracks?
You can set the parameters, whether it polls every, you know, it is a data call. We have two means of doing that. One is our in-band GPS will send the GPS data every time there's a push-to-talk and every time an emergency's declared. And then you can also set other intervals to poll those radios, every 30 seconds, 15, whatever you wanna do, as much, as much data as you wanna manage.
But if you're talking this thing now, like you go to the 911 center, could go to the resource officer in the school at the same time?
Oh, absolutely.
So if there's an emergency in a classroom, teacher could indicate that, goes to 911 center, but also go to the resource officer who's down the hall?
Right, so that, when they do, when they push that button, whether they wanna talk or not, it'll identify the unit, where it is, and an emergency's been declared, and it will open up traffic on whatever talk group you want. So not only would it go to Dispatch, but you would have it over the main sheriff's dispatch if you wanted it, over the school, whatever radio the SRO is monitoring. The SRO doesn't have to have a smart device. They can have, he or she can have their regular duty-carry radio, and it'll open up an emergency and state where it is and who it is, and if they're able to provide voice traffic, they can give more details. But even if it's in a covert situation, you can activate the button and know there's
In addition, we've included the Dispatch equipment. There are four consoles, and as mentioned, there are two network terminals. We've talked about the three VHF site overlay, the fire station alerting. Here's a breakout of the radios that are included, but as we've mentioned, that if you need more or less, or you wanna change the model numbers, the contract is open to doing that. And as we mentioned, this 350 Beyond licenses are already included. Now, we're gonna talk about the sites. There are six sites that are providing the P-25 signal. I don't know if you can see them very well on the screen, but the, let's take a look at the text on the top, the ones on the left in green. Those are what we call greenfield sites. Those are gonna be the new towers that are gonna be built for the system. That's in the Barbersville Collection, the TIAC Mountains, Mountain Track Collection Station, and the RSA Wilderness Water Treatment Plant. We also have sites at Clark Mountain and Flat Run Road. There's a water tank there nearby the school, and we'll be on that, too. So there'll be two existing foundations, two existing towers or structures. One that is yours, the Flat Run, and the other, which you're already on leasing and operating, is, which is on Clark Mountain. As well as there's a future, the existing and future Dispatch, which will be interconnected onto the system. As an overview of the towers, we've got the four new ones, and if you look at tower height, it says 180-foot SST, a self-standing tower. And those are gonna be the heights that we need for the system. The shelters, we're providing most of the shelters, so there's one existing up at Clark Mountain that we'll be able to use the space there, and the generator and the backup UPS power.
And those shelters are sized to accommodate the broadband...
Yes.
Device or racks?
Correct, yes. And as well as the towers that we're building, too. That, the towers, we've, besides what is needed for this system and any microwave antennas that we're proposing now, there are three tiers of systems that we've included. One is gonna be your broadband. We've, from our calculations, we put that at the top, we've assumed two antennas per sector and 12-inch and 5/8 cables. Those are really big cables, so we're looking at a conservative engineering of the load that's gonna be on the tower, so it's gonna support, you know, that or less. We also have loaded the tower with two cellular carriers, and that was four antennas each. These are eight-foot antennas. They're pretty big antennas. So there's four antennas per sector, and there's three sectors, and again, inch and 5/8 cables. So we've accommodated for your existing system and any future growth that you would like to sell or lease.
Can you actually put that on the top of the water tank at the Flat Run?
Yes. Yeah, there's already antennas up there right now.
Yeah, but they're not that kind of antennas.
Yeah.
You've got a lot more, you're putting a lot more in, it's already up there.
That's why...
Yeah, yeah, that, on the railing, we've included some extra dollars in case it has to be reinforcement for our antennas, which are bigger than the ones that are up there, but that's all included.
And the shelters are sized, in fact, just to be able to handle our public safety equipment, our broadband wireless provider, and cell company equipment, racks?
Not...
Not the cell.
They're sized for the county needs. So we've got the P-25 system for the sites that have the VHF overlay, that it'll accommodate the VHF equipment. For, all of them will accommodate the broadband equipment, and for the ones that have the two cores, those two shelters are bigger, and you can see the TIAC is 12 by 28, it's size two.
So we would need to allocate enough space at these towers for a cell company to have their own shelter?
The compound will be built and can handle that. You know, of course, they would have to bring...
Sorry, I just wanna clarify. The shelters, as presented, have enough rack space for broadband equipment that you expect, the maximum load for the tower?
Yes.
Correct, okay. That's what Larry and I, you know, verify. They may not have a lot of extra space, they may need to share some rack space with someone, but there will be physical space in there for as much as the tower will hold. But that's something we would also work with Glenn.
Right, and then, yeah, and then the cell companies would have their own shelter and their own fiber connection.
Yeah, and typically, the cell companies, or especially you, would want control over who has access to the equipment. So from a safety standpoint, you know, the access would, really should be just for you.
Yeah, I forgot about that.
Here's the back hall network, and there's a lot of lines... Here's the backhaul network, and there's a lot of lines here, and hopefully I can sort it out for you. That, the big main network that you're seeing here, the dark blue is the microwave that is included in our proposal. The blue, lightly dotted are fiber, which is going to be connected. And the green are the optional microwave links for, to, to connect to the other counties. So we, we've created a loop, the largest loop we can create, which allows redundancy. In cases of break-in one point, traffic can be rerouted all the way around. So it creates a high reliability in the network. Up in the upper left-hand corner, we've got the TAC site, and that's a really central hub for the microwave. And from there, we've got line of sight to this location, and there'll be microwave coming to the dispatch. The specification is per the RFP, three hundred megabits per second, high reliability. And we know that you've been trying to optimize the various projects of fiber and broadband and so forth. And from, one of the questions that we got was, can microwave be reused? And the answer is yes. That if there's a microwave link now and you put in fiber, we can take that microwave and utilize it if there's a need someplace else.
I, I hate to appear ignorant, but I'm, I'm a little confused by your map here because it's, it's showing... Where, Gordonsville doesn't seem to be on this map.
The, the, there is not a site now in Gordonsville that we were working with Stephanie to create the best. And they traded off, it was traded off of Gordonsville for the
Mountain Track.
Mountain Track.
We couldn't get on the water tank at Gordonsville because of the Gordonsville airport.
Don't we have fiber running into Gordonsville?
Yes.
But the wireless for the radio system will be covering Gordonsville from the Mountain Track.
It's a combination of Mountain Track and TAC.
This is just the fiber between the, the tower. So if you decided to put fiber all the way out to Barbersville Collection, that link would be switched to reflect fiber.
You'll see on the propagation map that we, we had gone through an analysis of whether there was a suitable site for a tower in Gordonsville. And at the end of the day, figured that really it wasn't a viable site. And then the Mountain Track site was actually meeting everybody's needs and then some, and didn't diminish the coverage and available to the tower. But the fiber's absolutely still going to Gordonsville to Gordon Barber. We're just not utilizing it for public safety.
Question with that, with the, if we did the Peters Mountain connection, that would provide additional coverage back towards the Mountain Track antenna. Is that correct?
Well, the Peters, the Peters Mountain site is obviously your tall site.
Right.
And it does provide a fair amount of coverage. There is some shadowing right below the site. But should you lose a site and you have the ISI connection, that coverage would backfit.
But it would, but, yeah, but it would also increase. You're going to get beneficial coverage from that when that connection's made.
Definitely to the Gordonsville area
Yes.
because of the direct line of sight back in there.
But the, the, we've got the specifics on like the in-building predictions. And Gordonsville's covered excellently with, with the Mountain Track. And we just couldn't find a viable tower or location for a tower in Gordonsville.
That was the problem. It really was a physical question.
Yes.
We looked at both water tanks and, and other spaces and around the school, and you just, there wasn't anything that really, in terms of space availability, that worked.
And one of the other challenges we had is with the FAA and Gordonsville's airport.
And the airport, that's right.
That took out a lot of adequate sites.
Yeah, so like Mountain Track, for example, is just under the two-hundred-foot mark for having to be lit and all. And doing that in Gordonsville wouldn't have been feasible.
Yeah, and, and all of these towers, we've run through FAA programs to make sure that we're in compliance. The only tower that's going to be needing lighting is going to be the Barbersville because it's over two-hundred foot.
Yeah, not to go back to the Gordon, but one of the other things that we're mindful of is, is on broadband, the fixed wireless broadband piece. And that, because the town is currently served by cable, there is internet available, and this fixed wireless piece for now, you know, we're, we're going to work on, on getting wireless down there. But if we have to build additional infill for fixed wireless broadband, we can do the, the shorter, the less than a hundred foot.
And one other comment on the, on the map you have there, on the, yeah. You, you're showing the microwave links. Another discussion that we're going to have is the possibility of replacing one or more of those links with the fiber. They, what you're showing there, except for Mountain Track, is it, is essentially just tapping into the fiber line that we're going to be building to connect the schools.
Correct, yes.
But we're also evaluating, and I think is, in fact, have bids, and we'll soon have a separate discussion about which of, of those towers to link with fiber. Possibly with the, with the microwave as a redundant, for redundancy in some cases, but, but not necessarily. It could be.
Yeah, it's about, it's about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and... A hundred and twenty's a good figure per hop of microwave. And so if the investment in, in fiber obviously is, is less than that, and you can eliminate the microwave, then, then you can certainly do that.
And the contract is structured for, with that flexibility in it.
Absolutely, yes.
If we, you know, we could eliminate a, a microwave leg.
We've included the most that you will need, and it's flexible to take out what you don't.
And that's what I was trying to say, thank you. That's what, that's what...
You're not obligated to buy all of this microwave if you don't need it.
But it's, right, it's...
If we can replace with the microwave or, replace the microwave with fiber for the broadband, does that increase our capacity then in those situations?
It absolutely does because you see the throughput on the microwave is limited to three hundred.
Yeah.
That's, that's the issue with microwave typically is the backhaul capability is, it's a pipe this big when you really want one this big.
Yeah, well, yeah, and these little tiny ones are much bigger.
And that was, again, that was our first mission, was to say, okay, where we know we have fiber, let's see what our radio coverage is. And that just wasn't going to be enough, so we had to add to that. And then these microwave links are, if you don't do fiber or if we need to deploy this now, and if fiber comes later, then you could repurpose that. But it's to say, worst-case scenario, from a vegetarian perspective, this is what it would be.
And I know that, that topology map that we're just looking at can be a little confusing. I just included a table here which spells out which tower is getting what kind of connectivity.
And that's the as-bid table?
Correct. Yeah, you know, and, and as we were talking before about, let's say now you decide to put fiber to one site before we started to deploy the system, that if you wanted to keep that microwave, you could say, okay, let's put it towards an ISI. Or if you don't want it, we can exclude it from, from the, from the bid, so. There's flexibility.
And that's a set of decisions that we're going to have to make in the near future.
I, I, I would like to share this bit of information about the ISI, if I may. If you're talking about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars estimate roughly per hop of microwave, obviously that's something that can be shared among counties that are doing the connectivity. But we are doing something in New Kent County and King and Queen County today. And it is a proof of concept that they're going to use to apply for grant funding to make the microwave connectivity. And what that is, is, and this is not something we would recommend full-time, but we can actually connect the Orange County system to the Spotsylvania County system via the ISI using commercial internet. And that's no charge to you. All you need is a static IP address on either side. But that connectivity is relying on commercial internet. Now, when you're talking about zero dollars to prove concept, that's one thing. But for regular deployment, it's not reliable. It's not public safety grade. But it, it's still a way to see how it works.
Okay, here we are in the coverage slides. And let me give you first a, a brief overview of what the colors are and what we're looking at. The lighter green is the coverage that's provided. In this case, it would be mobile coverage. That darker teal color is called time-delay interference. It is interference from this, the, the towers that are transmitting at the same time. We do not count that as coverage. Other people do. We do not. So we have, for mobile, the requirement in the RFP was ninety-five percent. We're guaranteeing ninety-seven percent mobile coverage. And that is usable mobile coverage. It is not in any of the interference zones. Portable on street, the requirement was ninety-five percent. We're guaranteeing ninety-six percent.
What are the little patches of white?
Patches of white are not guaranteed. In some cases, there may be signal. It may not provide you the required quality, which was DAQ three-point-four. It may be less than that, or in some cases, there may not be sufficient signal. So in some cases, there is. Some cases, there's not.
That, that's an excellent question. The standard that we designed to is what's called three dot four voice quality, which is public safety grade where none of the syllables, none of the audible is missing. If you were to turn this map on at three dot oh or even two point five, a lot of that white area would go away. And if you listen to, I can't, but if you listen to three dot oh audible traffic on a recording, which we have, and three dot four, I can't tell the difference. So this is not saying there's not going to be coverage there. It's just not guaranteed at the three dot four voice quality at that area.
For in-building coverage, it's provided as for information only. The, it's, this is portable coverage inside a building. Eight dB is an attenuation factor. It's typical of a house, for example. So this represents typical house, indoor house coverage, should you need to go in for your emergency. And that's covering about ninety-one percent. And that's for, for information only. It's not guaranteed. Portable twelve dB is more like your strip mall, smaller, or retail stores and so forth. And we've got that at eighty-five percent of the area. Now, this is just your system. Your system is designed so you are self-reliant in the coverage, that you're only relying on your cell towers to get you to that ninety-seven percent coverage on mobile or that ninety-five, six percent on portable on street. As you were mentioning, if you are now connected to the adjacent networks, there's going to be overlap of signal. I probably should have provided a map showing that. I think there's about seventy percent of the, of the county which has portable on-street coverage provided from your adjacent networks.
You have, you have that in there, I think.
Well, the map that I've got, another confusing map. But what this is, is this is showing you the most likely server or the most likely network which you're going to be talking on based on our algorithm. So the light green, unfortunately, it shouldn't, it should be orange, but it's light green, is your coverage. The pinkish coverage to the north is from the FCR system. The light blue to the lower right is from the Spotsylvania. And the red is from Peters Mountain. And in, in some cases, as you're seeing, the, the adjacent signals are stronger. But that, that just gives you an, an alternative should you need. Let's say you're in front of a building and you're blocked from one of your towers. You know, you're going to get other coverage from one of the towers from your neighboring system. So this is what it looks like from a, a network, regional standpoint.
And, and is that eight dB or, or what is that? Oh, this is on-street. I'm sorry, it's on-street. I see.
Yeah, this, this particular map is, is portable on-street. When you're looking at the in-building ones, you're gaining a couple of percentage points. I, I'm sorry, I didn't include that, and I don't remember it off the top of my head. But you get an extra couple of percentage points of additional area that you did not get with your standalone system.
Kenny, on the, on the in-building, the eight dB and twelve dB, in fact, Mr. Johnson, the tower in Gordonsville, there wasn't really a change in the coverage of in-building between Mountain Track and if we were able to site one in Gordonsville. So there really wasn't a diminishing return, so to speak, by going for in-building coverage in the town, which is really what they, they're looking for.
Yeah.
Do you have the critical building list in there? After that, we'll bounce around a little bit because I think that's important, I see.
Yeah, we're, we have a time constraint. It's not your fault, it's ours, but, but...
No, I, I know, you got, absolutely.
Yeah, but you've gotten, yeah. It should, no, unfortunately, did not include it.
Hey, well, we have, in, in the proposal, we've got a list of the critical buildings that were identified. And all of those buildings that were identified have more signal strength than the density of the structure, meaning there will be in-building coverage there.
Right, Gordon Barber Elementary.
And one real quick question on that. If we come across a building, a commercial building, that does not have adequate coverage, is that something that the, the building owners could put a booster of some sort in to log mineral system?
Absolutely. There, there are several ways to handle that.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir. Yeah, but we, we, all we have, we have some information on, on the radio subscribers. We have some information on consoles. It's in your packet. In the interest of your time, we'll do what you all recommend. Or entertain any questions.
Could you, could you give a, a brief description of the capability of the, of the portables? Just because, because it's, they're pretty remarkable units. I don't, I don't know if you brought one with you or not, but it, it, you've got pictures of them, so.
Yeah, I did and left it in the car.
They're not your old hand walkie-talkie kind of device.
Just briefly, we, we, when we went, we came out with a multiband portable radio called the Unity 100. We took the technology from the military and the DOD and brought it into public safety. It allows the radio to talk on all frequency bands, VHF, UHF, seven hundred, eight hundred. As, as great as that technology was to the end user, it was a brick. It was a big radio. We took that technology and helped, or had the assistance of first responders to develop this ergonomically-fit radio called the XL 200P. That is a photograph here, but this design will do all of your bands, all of your radios come equipped with VHF, UHF, seven hundred, eight hundred. The other thing we did, we didn't want to say, do you want encryption? Do you not want encryption? Do you want over-the-air programming? Do you not want over-the-air programming? Do you want over-the-air rekeying? We included everything in the radio, full package, everything. So there's no, I need to buy software later for these radios. All of these radios can be equipped in the field later or before they're delivered with the LTE component, where you just insert a SIM's card. And if you lose your RF coverage on your system, it will pick up your LTE or cellular provider service. All of the radios come standard with Wi-Fi. So for example, you could have pre-programmed in some of the buildings that you know don't have good coverage in the basement, but they've got their own Wi-Fi connection. That can be pre-programmed in the radio, so that if you lose RF, it'll go to Wi-Fi and talk back through the system.
It's in Bluetooth because also the Bluetooth with the shoulder mics and so forth.
Right, so all of the radios come standard with GPS, no additional software required, and Bluetooth. So you can pair this radio with a wireless speaker mic. You can Scott Airpack, pair it into your self-contained breathing apparatus. And you can even pair it to your off-the-shelf commercial earpiece. It'll pair right with that if somebody's monitoring from the court, and you don't have to buy expensive public safety stuff. I mean, just your regular earpiece. So very, very versatile radio. Just a couple of other things. It's got, it's got voice enunciation for the first responders. So if they're switching talk groups and are not in a position to look down, or if they're in a situation, it'll tell them what talk group it's on. It's also color-coded. So if you want police to be blue and fire to be red, if you came here or you're in an environment where you just see down on the top display, it's red, you're on a fire talk group. Or if it's green, you're on public work. So it's color-coded. It also comes standard with what I call, can you repeat my traffic feature? If you've ever listened, we're infamous for it in, in, in law enforcement. They'll put out a description for a suspect or stolen vehicle, and the officer will inevitably, deputy will come back and say, can you repeat that traffic? This radio has a push button. This radio has a push button. You program whichever button, and it'll play back the most recent traffic. So a lot of functionality and features with the radio.
Yeah, that, one of the strengths of the system, I think, are these, the very end devices, as it turns out. Yeah, thanks. Any other questions or any areas you want to explore more thoroughly? We, as we often do, we sort of take over the conversation. You guys don't get to do everything you had planned. Anything else you wanted to say that you haven't gotten to the opportunity to cover?
The only thing is that we are, again, on behalf of the entire Harris organization team, we can't thank you enough for the opportunity to hopefully partner with the county on this great project. We're excited. It's home to us, and we thank you for the opportunity. If anyone has any questions about any particulars, we're available anytime to discuss on the phone, conference call, or we can jet up here in an hour and forty-five minutes.
And they have a very robust training program as well as retraining program that, when you bring in new employees and things like that, a lot of it is.
Web-based.
Web-based.
In-person, so, yeah.
Have you ever done any other projects that tried to put broadband and the, and public safety communications together?
No, sir. This is cutting-edge technology.
Okay.
What a great.
I can see why that, a little more exciting for you.
No, we haven't. So again, as I was talking, kind of in individual conversations, we had deployed some LTE pilot programs prior to first coming out. But doing the commercial broadband in conjunction with this, the infrastructure, the setting, all of that is so incredible. But we're going to help any way we can with some of that other technology. Or if we don't know, we'll find somebody that does. It's exciting.
So I didn't pay him to tell that statement that you all are visionary in the way you're configuring all.
Or fools. One of the, one of the comment about spares and repairs. You want to, can you make a three-sentence overview of how you do that?
Oh, absolutely.
Because that's the other critical piece of this, because the stuff always happens at the wrong time. Was it in here? If it's in here, we can find it, but.
No, so again, boy, can I make a busy map? So we are going to have a shop with dedicated technicians located in Culpeper, Virginia. In addition to our shop in Fredericksburg, Harrisonburg, and in Bedford County. So we're going to have a layered approach to ensure that your system has the expertise, engineers, and technicians that can respond on a dime. The other neat thing that you have is you have Network Operations Center monitoring twenty-four seven. We've got a group in Melbourne, Florida, that's sitting there watching your sites. And if an alarm goes off, dispatch will notify technicians before anybody knows there's a problem.
There's one thing you could do, and it would be a cost savings for you. You could consolidate Fredericksburg and Culpeper.
Yes.
Into Orange. And, you know, then you'd have one site. And you may want to contact our economic developer over there on that.
That sounds awesome.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Pricing or.
Stephanie, you want to, anything else you want us to be aware of?
We were successful today. We have one minor change we're making to the contract. Tom's already approved it, I just need to print it. It's eight hundred and eighty-one pages. But in that, we were able to come in within budget. We think we're at eight million even.
I would make such a motion to.
Authorize county.
Authorize staff to execute a contract.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment that aside from Harris, who they do this every day, all day, I'd like to really thank Stephanie for her work on this entire project.
I really wondered, when did you get your electrical engineering degree?
I just listen to Mr. White all the time.
Boy, are you in trouble.
One thing with Mr. Crozier, while we're handing some accolades before the motion, is Stephanie was kind of leading the chairman. They also had Michael Cass, Sheriff's Office, Nikki, and then everybody from dispatch.
Larry.
Larry, Nathan. It was really a team.
Yeah, the staff had really done a great job in terms of, really for a year now, from creating the solicitation all the way to this point. And it's, it was really nice that we were able to do this.
It was at least a couple of years ago that it was first kind of tossed out there. And the number was, at that time, I remember like fifteen, sixteen, seventeen million dollars and stuff like that, so.
And I think.
It turned out a lot better than that.
Right, and I think we've actually, we have an improved technology from what was talked about in the assembly. We're, we're at the edge. Hopefully, we're not at the bleeding part of the edge, to be determined. But we're certainly at the edge, and this should serve us well for a good while. And the good thing is that this new technology, you can, you can upgrade software without having to replace the widgets. And that's a real advantage from where we were.
Absolutely. And the only other thing I wanted to point out is part of the specifications and the contract negotiations and the vision, again, of the project. Once this system is built, tested, and accepted, the day it's accepted, there's thirty-six months bumper-to-bumper warranty on everything. So it's a thirty-six-month warranty right out of the gate before any maintenance contract would ever have to be decided. So three years, whether it's a radio knob or a tower goes down or a network switching center, P to C goes down, it's replaced.
And on the, and on the very first Schedule A, we have in there that we're flexible in what is fiber, what is microwave, how many spares we want, how many types of different radios we want. And they've been really great for being flexible with us, especially, you know, with the schools or the sheriff's office determining what they want or what their needs may be once they get the system.
Okay, any further discussion? How about a roll call, Ms. Allison? Just for spending a pile of money, we might as well stand up and be noticed here.
Mr. Crozier.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
And Mr. Goodwin.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. We're excited about the partnership.
Thank you.
Forward to. All right, boy. Took that about as far as we could take it. Good. Let's hope.
Cutting-edge stuff.
Got to make sure she's ready. Are you ready? Okay. Call the meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When I stand there, I know I'm blocking the flag for everybody. Too much of me.
We're going to fix that.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll have to consider that in the design of the.
Yeah, there we go. There's a design consideration. On the agenda, I have one change to propose, which is to delete item seven A. Any other changes or modifications to the agenda?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Special presentations and awards and appearances. Mr. David.
Yes, sir. Mr. White, I think we have.
Do we have?
Yeah, we have service, one service award, but it's a big one. As you're making your way down, I'd like to recognize our Clerk of the Circuit Court, Teresa Carroll, for thirty years of service to Orange County. You've got to come forward for the picture.
We've got to really recognize you. You're not going to do it back there. Oh, my. Sitting right here, we're going to be photographed today. Congratulations. Thirty years. You must have started work when you were. I was going to say earlier than that. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait just a minute before you leave, Teresa. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just make a comment. My wife and I went into the clerk's office about twenty-nine and a half years ago. And we'd come down from Fairfax, where when you walked in the building, if somebody grunted at you, you were lucky. We were down here doing some title work for a large project. Walked in, and this young lady asked what she could do to assist, worked with us probably for the next month, every time we walked in, and could not have been more helpful. And that is how that office has been ever since Teresa's been there. And I just wanted, on a personal note, what an awesome job you've done with that office throughout the years.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, I appreciate it. I've enjoyed working for the county and serving our republic for the past thirty years. And I hope to continue to do so. But thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. This is Spotlight. The owner of La Bistro Corbin. Is he with us?
I'm not sure that he has arrived yet.
Okay, we'll move on from there. We have an introduction of the new Rapahannock Rapidan District Health Department Director. I don't know who's going to do the introduction, but.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Karchner came on, I guess, a few, few months ago. We felt this was an opportunity to have him come and introduce himself.
Okay.
To you all.
All right. Dr. Karchner.
I think he has a PowerPoint.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Mr. David, thanks for this opportunity, brief opportunity, just to introduce myself. I'm Wade Karchner. I'm the Director of the Rapahannock Rapidan Health District and been here for a few months. And back in March, I emailed Mr. David a, on the twenty-eighteen county health rankings. And I thought that would be a good way to introduce oneself. The health rankings are interesting. They, they're put out by the University of Wisconsin and the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. It measures the health of the counties in the United States, and then it ranks them state by state. So you can take note of where you lie within your fellow counties within the state of Virginia. And it measures two things. It measures health outcomes and it measures the health factors that lead to those outcomes. And so we'll take just a real brief run-through how this pertains to Orange County. And as you, at least the one that I had put in, yeah. The website is found at countyhealthrankings.org. And it really gets to the question as to what health is. As you can see on the, on this little graph here, we start with policies and programs that lead to those health factors, and then those lead to health outcomes. But what you'll notice that's interesting there is especially, you see these health factors of physical environment, social economic factors, clinical care and health behaviors make up the health factors. We typically think of health as clinical care, when we go to the doctor. That's what makes us healthy. But you can see there, pretty much twenty percent of how healthy we are makes up or is derived from the clinical care that we get. So the other eighty percent has not a lot to do with when you go to the doctor. It has to do with your physical environment, the environment you live in, your social and economic factors. And those things that these rankings look at, they do look at your education, the employment, the income that one makes, their family and social support. So they have defined all of these things in these health rankings, and they come up with the rankings for all the counties. So with no further ado. Here are the county health rankings. Here's the Commonwealth of Virginia. And if I'd been smarter, I would have put a big arrow here so we wouldn't have to find us. But here we are in Orange County. In nineteen, in twenty-seventeen, we were fifty-third out of one hundred and thirty-three jurisdictions. And in twenty-eighteen, we improved a little bit, forty-six. Now, you will see counties from year to year change, because intra-county, things are changing, but also other counties are changing and doing things different, going up and down. So you might be doing things great as a county, yet other counties might be doing better or worse, and so rankings can jiggle a little bit. Same thing with the health factors. The first one was health outcomes, health factors. Twenty-seventeen, the county was forty-fifth, and in twenty-eighteen is fifty-four. Again, we don't pay too much attention to the noise from year to year, but just to see sort of where Orange County ranks. You see, our Orange County really is in the top half and are pretty comfortably settled right into that second quartile, as we call it. And here's a quick snapshot of some of those factors that lead to the health factors and lead to health outcomes. Things that Orange County from twenty-seventeen to eighteen didn't do so well at. The rate of premature death went up. Percent of driving deaths with alcohol involvement went up. Rate of sexually transmitted infections, particularly chlamydia is the benchmark that they use, went up. Percentage of children in poverty went up. Things that we're doing better at, percentage of uninsured adults, preventable hospital stays, and the average density of fine per ticket matter, i.e. health or air pollution. That's the kind of things they look at, and then they get a composite measurement of, of the county in those two main areas. So that's where we are in Orange County. You can go to the website. One can sit and play with all the numbers and look, compare to other counties within Virginia. You can compare to counties across the United States. If there's a county that demographically looks like Orange County, you can see how you're doing.
Can you look inside those, the factors and the like to see if there's a, there's one that's either changing in the wrong direction rapidly or causing the number to be what it is? Is there a way to drill down to?
Yes, you can drill down.
To see where we might be an outlier, let's say, in a particular category?
Yes. In fact, I went today and just pulled up Orange County. I compared them, this is straight off the website, compared Orange County to the state of Virginia, just to see. But you can do the same analysis with any other county. And it breaks down each one of those factors and shows you the rate, the number, whatever the measurement was, it shows you what that is.
When you look at that, what do you see? Do you see, anything that gives us something we should be aware of or?
Yeah, when I, when I spoke before, I said that so many things outside of even the health department's purview really make up one's health. And I look at here, access to exercise opportunities. However that's defined, I mean, you can always argue as to how that's defined. Virginia, eighty-three percent of the people have access to exercise opportunities, and Orange County, fifty-four percent. Again, I don't know how they measure that, but that's something to, one might look at.
You don't get any exercise out on the farm. You don't have a tractor or anything else, huh?
My tractors don't, don't have treadmills mounted on them, that's true.
Let's see.
Is it either?
Is there, I mean, that's why I, I looked at that before, and I've seen that. I said, it just doesn't make sense. Well, I got a lot of people busting their tail. I mean, I look at the work you do.
I don't think that gets measured well enough.
I know.
Especially the rural counties and the rural life.
Is there anything in there that you see that local government could have an effect on?
I think so. Right off the top of my head, I could drill down in some of these and talk about them. And it would be good fodder for perhaps a presentation for me to really bring that in a, in a work group or something. But access to exercise opportunities, I just pulled that out of the hat since it looked somewhat glaring. But there are opportunities for the local government to have, play in that as well as to what the town or the county has in the way of provision for exercise. I don't know what that looks like, but it is something to think about. Here's something, here's another one, alcohol-impaired driving deaths, and that gets to that there, forty-eight percent versus thirty-one percent for the state overall.
So we're quite a bit higher than the state average.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Clinical care issues, uninsured population, not that much different from the state. Primary care physicians, we have a lot less per capita than the state does. Same with mental health providers and dentists. Don't know how much that local government can do about that. But state government and even federal government can. But as, as the Health Department, we play in those fields as well, so.
Anything that the Health Department can do to help, to promote those, to improve those numbers?
Well, you look at this one right here, the rate of sexually transmitted infections, we are well above the average for the state. Well, you look at this one right here, the rate of sexually transmitted infections, we are well above the average for the state. And that's a battle we fight every day in the Health Department, so, you know, we've got our job cut out for us as well. But, yeah, looking at this cold like this, there's still some things. Children in single-parent households, that's one of the measurements. And we're, we have more, thirty-six percent versus the state average of thirty. And it just. There's interesting things here all around. The bottom line length of life, they have a measurement for premature death. In other words, years lost prematurely. Per a hundred thousand people. Virginia, six thousand one hundred years of life lost prematurely for every one hundred thousand people. In Orange County, that's seventy-four hundred. So that's a significant larger. Basically, it tells you that people, life expectancy is a little lower here than the state average. We'll tell you, studies done in Richmond show that depending on where your zip code is, really dictates where, what your life expectancy will be. If you move one, one or two miles away, depending on what your zip code is, you'll drop fifteen years.
So all I need to do is move across the street.
That's exactly right. Or one might think that.
Yeah, that's right. It'd be interesting to analyze the cause and effect there.
Yeah. So, just in closing.
Maybe correlation, not causation.
Maybe correlation, but we do know that incomes and lifestyles impact our health probably more than anything else we have. But again, we work at the Health Department to understand the factors that influence health for our community. I like to present these things every year when they come out to the boards of the five counties that are in our district. And really what it does, it tells us that most of the health factors really are not in the sole domain of the Health Department. And it really tells us, or gives us the opportunity to start or continue a dialogue as to what we can do. As the local government and as local agencies and state agencies and faith partners and. You name it, everyone get together. So, any questions, further questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Make sure I get everything. Yes.
Okay. Senator Johnson.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, new business. Miss Glenda, health insurance renewal. One of our favorite topics. I say that for your benefits. We have guests, I see.
Well, I think for a change tonight, it has actually good news. We've had a good year in terms of our claims experience. And the recommendation tonight is to continue to offer the three plans. And to actually share the two point three percent reduction in our expected cost among the different tiers of insurance. So I will turn it over to Carrie and let her go into that a little further.
Glenda stole my thunder. She told you that we're getting a decrease. I know, I know.
Yeah, that's right.
It's all because of that, actually.
Repeat that into the microphone a little bit closer.
I know, right? For the record. It is not often that we get to deliver that news either, so it's very, very nice for a change. No, it's fine. I've got it here in case we get into the weeds a little bit if we need it. But thank you all so much for letting us be here tonight. We'll quickly go through the medical renewal, just to talk about, you know, what we're seeing, what we went through for the process this year. And then we'll quickly highlight the dental and the other benefits for employees, and what the action items would be for the evening for the renewal. So just a quick recap on the medical. Like Glenda said, Anthem's renewal is calling for a two point three percent decrease. We did go to market to see if there was a more favorable option, just to make sure we're always evaluating what's out there. Because sometimes we see, when you get that favorable renewal, you might be able to get an even more favorable option through competitive negotiations. This year, we didn't see anything more competitive that was worth the disruption of moving. And so it's a total of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in savings. And most of that's due to Anthem made a recommendation on your formulary. So that's how the pharmacy plan works for prescription drugs, and I'll talk about that on the next slide with that change. But just a quick highlight of how the claims are running, just to provide an update on that. You had forty-two members that made up claims that were over twenty-five thousand dollars. So that's about fifty-two percent of your total claims. So three percent of your memberships making up about fifty-two percent of the total claims paid out. That's pretty, that's a little bit higher than the norm, but pretty typical of insurance. You're gonna have a small group make up the large claims. You had a few, four that exceeded your pooling point of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you remember, you pay for extra reinsurance, anything, any claims that go above that amount as part of the program with Anthem. And then your prescription drugs, I just wanted to point out, because that's something you may hear about on the news, the cost of prescription drugs. And there's a lot of news programs and things talking about that. Right now, they make up about twenty-six point four percent of your total claims spend. When I got started in the industry, I want to say it was closer to about ten percent of the spend was the average. Now, with most groups that I work with, it's usually closer to thirty percent now. So we're just seeing an upward trend in the cost of prescription drugs. And it's because there are all these great life-saving medications that are out there that are just really expensive from the pharmacies. So you are not alone in that respect, but we'd like to keep an eye on that. And so our underwriting team that we have on staff looked at the renewal. We feel that it was a fair renewal based on the claims data and how the, how the group as a whole performed over the course of the year.
So a question about the drug before you move on. It seems to me that unlike other claims. That that is a fairly predictable amount. I mean, if we're gonna run at a percentage that's, you know, between twenty-five and thirty percent, let's say. In terms of our payout planning, for lack of a better way of describing it. You know, we could almost take that off the top or the bottom, whichever your perspective is. In terms of assessing the risk, I guess you could say. Because that's, you know, that's gonna happen almost routinely, if you will, as opposed to a. You know, an emergency or an illness kind of a claim.
Actually, you would be surprised now, medications, you can easily have a member, whether it's a child, a spouse, or an employee. Develop a condition that could require the use of a medication that can cost thousands of dollars.
But I realize that, but that's a spike on top of, I mean, I'm trying to decide or determine, is that a baseline? Is that, is that, it's unlikely to be less than that number.
Accurate, yes.
Very likely could go above it, but it's unlikely to be.
I was, I wasn't fully, yeah.
I was trying to formulate my thought as I was rattling, but, but, because that's a big number. You take a quarter of the total payouts, you know, that's a pile of money that's, that you know is going to leave the fund.
Do we know how much of that is chronic and how much of it is?
There are some specific claims information that we can dig into to see like what the, the use of the pharmacy claims is. In general, it's pretty much on the norm for like how it's spent, whether it's for cancer or chronic conditions or things like that.
Some people are on a particular insulin or something like that for decades. And understanding how much of that is chronic, whether or not there's any.
Yeah, and I've got some claims detail on the pharmacy piece. The one thing that I will tell you, obviously, is that, you know. Certain conditions can really drive, so for example, I'm using an example from another employer. There is a child that has a condition called multiple sclerosis. And so that medication that they take for that is life-changing, life-saving. But it's hundreds of thousands of dollars a year that they pay for that medication. So that's why I like one condition, and that's not unique. I mean, that happens to all employers.
Lots of kids with.
Um.
One of those things, Carrie is.
Six thousand dollars a month. That's what I was thinking.
With all the claims, whether they're pharmacy or medical claims, we are capped.
Correct.
Because of our reinsurance.
Yes.
So our upward liability is known.
It's still known at the hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark, so per person, that's the most that you'll ever pay. And so that protection is really helpful if there ever is an emerging claim where that's a cost driver. You know, I would say in general, you're specific. I was trying to look to see if I had any information specific to the pharmacy breakdown. From kind of the detailed review that we went through, but I may have to give it back to you on that, on some of the specific conditions. Or what's driving the pharmacy claims. What I will add is the change to the essential formulary with Anthem is going to help with some of the things that can be controlled. That essential formulary does exclude high-cost medications where there's a lower-cost alternative that's a proven. In the same drug category, in the same class, so it's essentially, you know.
Appeals to that process if somebody's been using a high cost and now the insurance company says we're gonna cover this other one?
There can be a process. Because you're self-funded, you can make exceptions, depending on kind of what comes up during that process. We want to make sure we treat all employees the same, so if there's a specific condition that comes up that we feel like we want to carry that or cover that medication. We can go through that process. But in general, these are things where it might be something more like, it's not gonna be the big life-changing drugs, because they don't have those.
Generics.
Those generics available. It's gonna be stuff like, a great example, I think, is Lipitor. And there's a generic version called Simvastatin, and there's a couple other options within that drug class. They're just not gonna cover the brand name Lipitor, because there are like six different versions of that drug that are generic and cost hundreds of dollars less. So you still have choice for coverage.
If we're doing this, changing this process, do you think that'll reduce the twenty-six percent?
Um, I think it's gonna help manage that twenty-six percent. Because right now, essentially, employees can, and it's not because they're picking the high-cost medication, it's because the doctor is saying this is the recommended. And the doctor doesn't necessarily know the cost of the drug either. And so that's, healthcare, that's a problem, is the cost of things isn't always known to the folks that are recommending, recommending things. So there are some examples here. Another one is if something's available over the counter, it won't be filled through the formulary, through the benefit program. So that could be something like Allegra for allergies. You can get a prescription for that and get the pharmacy to fill it. But it's available over the counter, so that way it's not counting against your claims for the group. Employees are paying for it, but they're just not getting it through the pharmacy that's part of your benefit program.
Are we gonna have a notification program to let people know that, of this change?
Yes, so just like in all years past, we'll have open enrollment meetings to communicate to employees. We'll provide communication to them as well to make sure they know about the changes. Anthem will put together booklets for employees to kind of go through. And anyone that's on one of the medications that we'll be changing will get a notification by mail as well.
In the memo, we got, we said point of service costs for some of the dependent tiers would reduce by fifty-four to seventy-three dollars?
Yes.
I went back and looked at your, in your rate charts, and the most I saw was about a twelve-dollar drop.
So in the booklet, or the handout that Glenda submitted for you all, in that chart. That's where kind of. I think it's on the second page. Sorry, I was looking at the current. On the very, on the very bottom set of rows for that. For you all, you'll see the change per month. For like the point of service program is sixty-three dollars if they cover a spouse. Sixty-five dollars if they cover a family. It is twelve dollars for the key care or PPO plan.
I'm just looking at the difference in the.
That's compared to what they're paying today and what it will be starting October one.
I don't wanna take the time to do, but I wanna look at that. Somebody to explain that a little more to me.
Sure, so part of.
We're not trying to do it tonight, now.
Yeah, well, just to highlight the plan design changes, Anthem did make a couple recommended changes on the. The one point of service plan for the co-pay at the doctor's office to go from twenty to twenty-five dollars. And then for a specialist to go from forty to fifty dollars, so there will be a change there. The same for urgent care, it's going from forty to fifty. So minor, minor changes for that plan. And then the out-of-pocket or out-of-network costs are going up slightly. But in general, your folks are not going out of network. Your claim utilization for out-of-network services is less than one percent. And it might even be less than half a percent. It's a very low amount. So out-of-network, especially in this area, isn't really a concern. But the savings for anyone, for employees, you know, they're staying status quo, not changing. For anyone that has dependents, if they're on the five hundred plan or the three thousand plan, they'll see savings anywhere from fifty-four to seventy-three dollars per month. And then if they're on the PPO plan, it's that nine to twelve dollars. So not as much on the PPO plan for those savings. And part of that is just because folks generally don't need to be on that plan in this area. Their only differentiator is just network, the access to a national network versus the local Virginia statewide network.
Is that, is that an aggregate of both the schools and the county that you're showing us here?
The savings.
Well, the, the, the description of the plans, eh, I just lost.
Yes, you offer the same plans as the schools. Your contributions is, are slightly different. Your employees pay twenty dollars for the employee-only rate, whereas the school system pays fifteen. We had adjusted that, I think, from ten dollars last year, I think it's right. So we maintain that this year. But we're almost, the goal was long-term to kind of get us all on the same page, so we're pretty close there right now for that.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that this was.
It is inclusive.
Both entities, right?
Yes, it is inclusive of the schools. And like I mentioned before, we'll do the meetings with employees like we have had done in the past.
And just to clarify, the experience numbers that you were showing us earlier, is that, is that also all participants?
Yes.
Oh, I see, okay. I see it on this shirt. All right, okay.
You made the assumption you're going to have the same number of people in the various tiers and various plans.
Yeah, generally, we don't see a huge change in enrollment.
But that was, that was your assumption in terms of, okay.
You may have some folks that shift, and that is our long-term goal, is for more folks to consider the high deductible health plan. It is the lower-cost option for them as employees. It's the lower-cost option for you as the employer, and you do contribute money towards the health savings account. But it's not the right fit for everyone, so that's why we have choice. So you could have folks that consider that, that shift. And then long-term, you know, we're working together with the kind of benefits team from the schools, from the county. To make sure that we're always evaluating different options within the marketplace, that we are looking at benchmarking for other employers in the area. Specifically, other counties and school systems. It's our job to look for the best, best fit for medical benefits. And so that's why we go through that process of going to market for reinsurance and stop loss. And then healthcare reform, we're helping with that. And then the wellness initiatives, we're really gonna make a concerted effort this year. I think we're finally at a point where there are some big steps we can make towards helping employees. And helping the cost of the health plan manage that a little bit more through some wellness initiatives, as much as you all are comfortable with. So there's lots of levers that we can pull around that, and we're working with Anthem and some other folks to get that moving for this upcoming year.
To your, I guess it's your middle bullet there, your, our. Structure between the self-insurance piece and the stop-loss limits and things, that still seem, we seem to be in the right combination of.
Yeah, we look at that every year. We've got a special tool that kind of looks at the probability of where you might have some additional savings. If you increase that stop-loss limit or decrease it, sometimes we'll do that for groups. Right now, we feel like it's still right where it needs to be, which is, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand for your specific stop loss is. um, which is, you know, hundred and fifty thousand for your specific stop-loss is pretty normal for your size group and the type of entity that you are. Um, you know, the next step is either a hundred and seventy-five or two-hundred thousand. But that's where you have to make sure you don't have too many claims that exceed that, so you're paying out more than you're saving in the premiums that you're paying for that coverage. So that's part of what we look at and try to negotiate with Anthem, or whoever it might be that we work with, um, for that.
And the other pieces, I, I don't know if it involves you, is the, the question of maintaining the fund balance, is, is that, are you involved in that analysis with Glenda?
Mm-hmm, and she had an update on that.
I did, um, look at, um, the fund as it stands, uh, through the most recent month, which is through the end of May. And, um, it looks like now, uh, we're gonna be able to, um, recover a little bit from last year. Um, we'll still be under the target level of two months of expenses, which is one-point-one million. Um, I also looked at the expected claims that, uh, for medical are about six-and-a-half million. Um, we have a potential, uh, maximum claims liability of, uh, twenty-five percent over that. So, um, the difference is about one-point-six, so we're still below that number too, but, um, you know, it, it was a good year, um, we all, uh, meaning, um, the folks here on the county staff that met with, um, One Digital and the folks from the school staff felt like, you know, we went into the self-insurance, um, as a cost-saving measure, both to the county and to the employees. And, you know, this is the first year we've had a chance to say, look, it's working. You know, we're, we're actually having a good year, and we wanted to be able to, um, offer some of those savings back, uh, to the employees.
Oh, based on what I've heard from other organizations and, and, and employers, who are seeing anywhere from fifteen to thirty percent increases, to have something that's not only holding steady, but decreasing slightly is, is quite a surprise to me. I mean, it, it, it's, I think, apparently it's a surprise to us because we were expecting an increase of.
We had budgeted around it.
We budgeted eight percent or something, yeah.
And I've heard from some of my counterparts around in the region, anywhere from eight to, I heard, a one, it's just twenty-four percent increase.
Yeah.
Now, when we say we're actually, uh, uh, our insurance costs are coming in at two-point-three, but we're, with the cuts in the, uh, uh, in, in the, what the employee pays, what are we actually going to see then in terms of, uh, uh, expected expenditures?
It, for the county, it's about, was it thirty-six thousand savings on the county side?
Okay.
And the employees will feel a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Okay, so the, the two-point-three percent, uh, is partially offset by what we're cutting the employees' contribution.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's good.
You can come back next year if you bring us the same good news.
Yeah, right?
Otherwise.
I know, right? Now I have something, I, I gotta keep it going. Um, just really quick, the dental program is performing well. Um, it, uh, you know, could've had an adjustment of about point-eight percent. Um, we feel like that, we've actually been able to maintain the cost of that plan for employees and not, and not shift the cost on that, and that's what we recommend for this upcoming year, is to keep that flat so we don't have to adjust their, what they have to pay for, for services. Um, and we have great feedback about Delta Dental and the service, um, that they provide. And then the other benefits, there are really no changes, um, to any of those, um, plans as well.
Sort of surprised that we didn't have any, uh, county part-time or county retirees in the, uh, in the system? Just for the school?
Yes, and that, um, you generally don't have that many retirees under the plan in comparison to the schools. And part-time, I don't know that you have that many positions that are part-time benefit eligible.
It's bus drivers.
It's bus drivers for the school system. That's the main, uh, driver for part-time, or cafeteria employees.
Okay, so they're part-time and they, they take, but we don't have many part-time, and those that we do don't get enough. Okay, alright, so.
And that's, well, not to compare you to other county school systems, but that's pretty, pretty normal typical for what we see. And so really, the action items for tonight is just to approve the medical, um, renewal with the change, that essential formulary. Dental, um, we're new with no changes. Any other questions?
You also moved.
Okay, got a motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We'll remember this.
Yes, I know.
You set, you set the expectations, that's right.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, Steph, oh, you're still here, you're back up. We should've just turned this over to you tonight. Okay, or the contract for reassessment services?
Yes, sir. In February, we released the solicitation for, um, reassessment services for the twenty-twenty reassessment. We received three responses and held interviews with the top two ranked vendors. Um, the selection committee is recommending a contract be executed with Wompler means again. Um, and again, it would be for one year for them, for them to start in August, have everything ready to set the rate for twenty-twenty.
One year, but no, no options?
The, uh, the, the options are there for them to come back and do new construction. So it's set up that way where they can do new construction or check things like that, until the reassessment.
Okay. Anyone wanna make a motion or have questions for Steph?
I'll wait for comments.
First, I need a motion. Okay, I have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, now, discussion.
Um, I still believe we need to go to self-assessment. Um, I know the time constraints due to all the other projects we've been working on have not allowed to at current time. But I still think this is something that we need to, um, endeavor to work towards. I believe we'll get a better product without question, and I believe that long-term, even if the cost is not less, or even if it is a little bit more, it'll be a much more accurate, uh, taking of what's in the county. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Yeah, we, we've talked about this, and we've talked about getting some comparisons, so we kind of know what we're looking at. I, I still feel it's something we need to look at and.
I, I agree, I, we, we talked about having a work session to pursue this and see what other counties are doing, what our options are, what costs might be. Uh, let's, let's plan on a, a, a work session item.
And, and being the leader of the charge for this, um, I've discussed it with both, uh, county administrator and, um, commissioner of revenue, and due to the time constraints and everything, I let it slide until this next, next go-round because, uh, it wasn't a feasible thing to do at this point. But the commissioner has done, uh, research on it, doubt it would take much at all to update it, would it, Renee? Yeah, so, um, yeah, I would like to see us continue looking at that, but I, we've had some rather large fish to fry this year.
Well, in the time, we, we were up against the, the window when we needed to do this.
And I think we could come back to the board's two-year priorities, citizen services. I think this is something that we certainly can, can take a run at, get, get a few other things, planes landed and start on this. Certainly have something up and running with the board of referees before it's time to do this again. And we're still wanting to budget accordingly, probably within budget in each year.
Yeah, it, it keeps, it seems to keep sneaking up.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone wanna call a question other than me? If not, call the vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. I think it was unanimous.
No, it wasn't, sir.
Oh, was it? Sorry, okay.
One, one nay.
One nay, alright, let the record show.
Me.
That was you.
Yes, that was me.
I'll give you a chance to say, all opposed?
Nay.
Thank you.
Okay, pass this forward to one, thank you. Thank you for, I, I didn't catch that.
Not a problem, I, I know it's not the norm, so.
That's alright, I just didn't catch it, okay. Uh, Ms. Bradley, you're back up. Budget amendment for Orange County Public Schools for FY eighteen?
Um, this is a budget amendment, um, to the, uh, school, um, operating funds budgets. And it resulted from, um, an amendment to the school budget that happened, um, in May of two thousand and seventeen. This is for the current year's budget, the FY eighteen budget. Um, and you probably recall, there was, um, a turnover in the CFO at the school. And, um, at that time, Matt Benefield was called in and sort of reworked the budget based on the information that they had in May, which included changes in the, um, in the sales tax revenue that was anticipated, the state lowered their estimates on that. Um, there were also ADM changes and anticipated changes in federal funds. So it was really just a reworking of the budget, um, that happened before the budget ever was entered into the Munis, uh, software system. So the school board actually approved this last May, and just because of all the turnover, we have not, um, on the county side, seen this amendment, uh, for approval. So that's why I was bringing it forward tonight, um, as we're coming to the close of the fiscal year. We wanted to get it, um, you know, officially approved before the audit is complete and that sort of thing. And I see that Gary's here tonight and Dr. Tamer, so if you, do you have something to add to that or?
Thank you, um, I take responsibility for that. It was during the time that the adjustment was downward in the categories and, um, you know, not twisted, but it was a lot of transition. And my assumption was after the vote, that had been forwarded, and so I do apologize for that.
Okay, any other questions for, for Glenda? Okay, have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? I'll listen more carefully this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, I think that was unanimous, okay, was I correct that time? Sorry, and, and if I confused you, I, I looked at my computer instead of my agenda, and it, it jumped me a hit, so we need to back up. But, uh, to the emergency services, Brian, you wanna make any comments about that?
Uh, yes, sir, I've, uh, paired for you all's review and approval, updated job descriptions. As you know, our director of, uh, Emergency Communications Center Director, Public Safety Communication System Manager position is vacant since Nikki Taddy, and the Chief of Fire and Emergency Medical Services has been vacant since John Harkness's retirement at the first of the year. I've updated them, particularly on the, the Emergency Communications Center, I consulted with, uh, Sheriff Amos and Chief Deputy LaCass to make sure I was covering the law enforcement piece, uh, of the responsibilities they're satisfied with and the recommendation. And on the Fire and EMS, I, I updated that to, to make it more current, uh, with the signs, uh, my recommendations to adopt them as we're after. And once you adopt them, then I'll start moving through the recruiting process.
Okay. Any questions for Brian?
I think it was about as descriptive as you can get.
Boy, I'll say aye.
When you gotta pick up ten pounds, you gotta do repetitive things. It's like, in, in, in my world, you show up, it's like, can you work? Can you pick that up? Okay, you got a job. But very, very specific, yeah.
And as duties as assigned.
Always need that.
The county attorney is also the one that relies on these job descriptions from time to time to be descriptive.
Yeah. Okay, is there a motion?
Still moved.
A second, okay. Any further discussion? Listening carefully, I will say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
I think it was unanimous again, okay. Alright.
You just don't give them a chance, you just write down five oh's.
Yeah, that's what I, well, I think that's probably what I did, I was, and even then, I jumped in agenda items, so. Alright. Oh, business. Well, you're gonna take the lead on this?
Move. Do we adopt the, or adopt the resolution to appropriate fiscal two thousand and nineteen operating capital budgets?
Okay. Have a motion in a second, any discussion?
I, I think we, we should recess until August and then take this.
Follow the stage.
Follow the states.
I agree. There's certainly a, uh, an inclination to do that, I, I agree.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I might, as you know, Governor Northam signed the budget last Thursday. Uh, there were certainly some, uh, amendments to the funds coming down from the Department of Education for the county schools, and as well as social services. As you know, we're probably on the front end of having to hire more eligibility workers for Medicaid expansion. Uh, Crystal Hale's giving us that information. Our recommendation stands, adopt the budget appropriate, we're off, and then allow us to, to go through these additional dollars that are coming in for the various, uh, uh, state funds, and that way we can work it through the budget and find some policies committee and come back to you all with the recommendation. We're not in, in a, in a time-sensitive manner with these additional dollars.
Well, we are in terms of appropriating the initial money, that's what needs, needs to happen.
Speaking to the additional state dollars that potentially come in.
Alright, any other comments, discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye. Oh, that's, yeah, yeah, roll call, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Okay. And we also have the auxiliary list for the secondary six-year plan. Mr. David?
Allow, uh, he simply.
Okay.
Gentlemen, in front of you, um, is a request to review and adopt the auxiliary list for the secondary roads in Orange County. Um, we got so excited after the public hearing at the last meeting that we didn't go back up to it under new business and, um, overlooked adopting it. So there is a reprint in your packet, um, of the materials from the May twenty-second meeting. Um, as you know, we did review, um, the priorities and adopt the secondary six-year plan that evening. Um, I did note, going back to some discussion in April, um, Flat Run Road was, um, the only remaining project on your auxiliary list, um, prior to consideration this year. And I did go back and listen to the audio, um, from the year when that was added. And that was prior to Smart Scale, which was then known as House Bill Two. And it was, um, shortly after the adoption of GWAP, and it was added, um, kind of just to highlight the role of that road in the Germania Wilderness Area Plan. Um, and as you all discussed, it, it might be appropriate to maybe not have that, um, road on the auxiliary list just with the, the possibilities that are available, either through revenue sharing or Smart Scale or, um, some other type of, of project funding. So I did put that note in there, um, and then I also mentioned, um, from the, the identified projects that the board had previously provided to VDOT, there were a number of them that could not get into this year's six-year plan because of funding. Um, and those are recommended for addition to the auxiliary list this year. Um, and include Hallfield Road, Barnes Road, Reynolds Road, and then, um, Independence Road, Oak Springs Road, and Harbor Drive as potential rural addition projects. So, um, at the pleasure of the board, you can add or remove, um, whichever priorities you would like to list at this time.
Okay.
You can ask about Tannery Road, yes.
Does that just get tacked on to the end?
We can add that, um, at the time that this memo was done, I had not talked to Supervisor Crozier, um, about Tannery Road, which is a road in his district, and he has also expressed interest in including that on the list as well.
Right, just at the, at the end of the list, so.
The auxiliary list?
Yes, yes.
That's a real addition?
No, that's rural rustic.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's already in the state system and, um, it, it, it's, uh, point-five miles, so.
Okay. Alright, any other questions of Allison or comments?
And, and, and on a related but different subject, they're coming back at the next meeting? Or when, when are they coming back with the update on the?
For Smart Scale? Um, so we had our June first deadline, which I think was extended by a few days. Josh did enter, um, the five projects into the Smart Scale portal. And so VDOT has been looking at those projects, which they previously talked to you about, and evaluating them. And I anticipate that at one of the July meetings ahead of any August deadline, or May- deadline, or maybe even the second meeting in June, I've gotta confirm with Alan, that they will come back and, um, go over their recommendations and look for some direction from the board on selecting the four projects to apply in this year's round of funding.
Okay. Okay, so you want a motion to adopt?
Yes, sir. If you are okay with it, I'll add, um, the projects that are listed here as well as rural rustic for Tannery Road, and, um, that's what we'll have listed on our auxiliary list for now.
So moved.
Okay. Second, second, okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Do we need a roll call for this one, or is this okay? All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Yes, okay. Uh, county attorneys report.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, county ministers report.
Yes, sir. I have one item. Um, as the board is aware, the White House Office of Internal and Moral Affairs is convening. Uh, a Virginia County Supervisor's White House Conference during the day on Tuesday, June twenty-sixth. Several board members have expressed interested, are interested in attending. How we're to be able to go to the, the morning session and then the afternoon session and then be back here in time for the four o'clock work session, it is just not, 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 uh, not able to do that. So, I've talked with each one of you and, and there seems to be agreement. What we're going to do is cancel the June twenty-sixth work session and change the regular meeting start ti, start time to seven P.M. Uh, we've already, there are no public hearings scheduled that evening, and so you will be able to proceed to your regular agenda after the public comment period. Uh, we will, uh, make, uh, Allison will take care of the appropriate notices and darts to media and so forth. And so, uh, there is no action needed. Uh, we'll go ahead and take the steps to, to do that. And we'll make sure that the agenda is, is, you know, focused on those things that you all need to, you take action on.
Okay.
As we do with all agendas.
All right. Uh, let's see. Board comment. Anyone have anything?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, this Saturday in the town of Orange on Short Street will be the Trashy Ribs and Blues Festival. Uh, it was upgraded last year with the addition of a band that came out of Lynchburg, and, uh, excellent band, and we had a much greater showing. Uh, I sponsor this thing, so if y'all are around, I unfortunately will be fishing, but, um, you should come out and enjoy it. It was, it was an exceptional time last year, and the more it grows, then the less I have to fund it.
I think the weather's supposed to be cold for a few weeks.
Yeah, but it's, 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 it's the big kid party, so everybody ought to come out and give it a shot.
Okay. Any other comment? Any questions on the information items? Appointments? All right. And calendar. We have a quick request to schedule two public hearings, uh, on July tenth, um, some rezonings, and also a public hearing on the, I guess it's the three new GWAP zoning districts.
Yes, sir. It, it, you may be aware, Mr. Frederick, the planning commission had a public hearing. There was no one that came to speak. Uh, they recommended unanimous, we approve those. Uh, I would also say we've had, uh, I've had a number of conversations with some developers that are very interested in, in getting the board, you know, to, to bring this thing forward so that they may be able to take hard looks at it as to maybe looking at some development coming in for these zones and these plan districts. So, right now, they seem to be very favorable, please, with the flexibility, the rewards envisioned with these districts, so...
Okay. All right. County attorney?
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following: Discussion of the Assignment of Three Specific Administrative Employees of the County and Discussion of the Health of One Specific Administrative Employee of the County; Discussion concerning a prospective business or industry where a previous announcement has made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the county; Consultation with Legal Counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation with respect to the opioid crisis where such consultation or open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating process of the public body; and Consultation with Legal Counsel Employee retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters with respect to a modification of subdivision ordinance in terms of a proposed franchise agreement requiring provisional legal advice by such counsel. And whereas pursuant to sections two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, eight-one, eight-five, eight-seven, and eight-eight of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County dishears by authorized discussion for state matters in closed meeting. Need that as a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, yeah.
That is the constituent.
Sure.
Yeah, we don't have to wait, we can do it.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye. Now, take a deep breath.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
All right, four seconds, you're good now.
There, there we go.
And Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Hey, we're, we're running behind. Let's pick it up.
All right. It is seven o'clock. Time for public comment. Anyone signed up?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman?
All right, we'll close public comment. Next item on the agenda, public hearing. Proposed amendment to zoning ordinance ETA eighteen oh si, that was a good year, eighteen oh six.
I can't even remember that year. That's bad. Uh, gentlemen, your public hearing this evening is definitely a, a pretty minor, uh, what we call cleanup, a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. This, uh, clarifies the definition and the side yard requirement for duplexes. I brought this forward to you all. We have a, an odd situation where we permit, uh, what the ordinance calls two-family dwellings, what we commonly refer to as duplexes, uh, in all the zoning districts, but the setback, the yard regulations don't actually permit them to be built. So, this fixes that.
Because there's no setback from each other?
Right. Uh, planning commission held this, uh, public hearing, no discussion, recommended approval to you all. Uh, this is a staff-initiated amendment. We recommend approval as presented.
Okay. Any, any questions for Josh before we open the public hearing? All right, open the public hearing. Anyone sign up?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman?
Close the public hearing?
You're getting good, you're getting better.
Move with approval.
Is that her second in this?
Yes, there was.
Any further discussion? Okay. Uh, I guess we better do a roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye. This is five zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor, thank you.
Aye.